Called this regular meeting of city council to order today, October 5th, 2021 here at City Hall. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening?
I would like to talk about the skating rink under new business, please.
Are there any other additions to the agenda? Get a motion to approve. Have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Any citizens comments this evening? Consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, September 21st, 2021. Entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, 10-5, 2021, the amount of $152,592.69. Have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Stafford County Highway Department in the amount of $63,591.11. Have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. J and M Test Systems in the amount of $2,754.
What is this?
Or what, Jamie, Jason, somebody?
I think this is what's got stolen out of the truck.
Yeah, that's the crimp.
It's like a battery powered crimp tool, is that it? And then we just had something else repaired, looks like.
Yeah.
Is that something like that 2354 or is that something that's going to be maybe insurance or?
We...
Or is that something that's going to be?
Yeah, so, yeah, we turned that amount into insurance. We already got our check back from insurance. All the insurance from the theft of the red truck is complete.
So basically, this has already been paid for by insurance. Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, we have a demonstration from INA Alert System. Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, guys. You guys probably already know Jerry. I'm Jordan with INA. Some of you guys were at the luncheon learn. If you don't know, we are an IT integration company out of Ellwood. We've also got offices in Wichita and Garden City. We work with hospitals, nursing homes, local municipalities, school districts throughout the state and throughout the country. We predominantly use Vigilon, which is a Motorola Solutions company, for cameras and access control. Additionally, for healthcare facilities, we do nurse call, wander guard systems like that. Jake gave a brief presentation the other day. I just wanted to go over kind of the system that we use. We've done these in Sterling, Ellsworth, Hugaton, just to name a few as far as a citywide system to be able to prevent theft, create security within the within the community and bring the integrations and the response time to be able to address much sooner and much faster. I'm gonna sit down so I can use my thigh as a keep head mouse. Up here, this is the client login, so this is what you would see in the software. I'm currently logged into Vigilon demo sites. One of them, the manufacturing site being down in Dallas, Texas, the Richmond site being in Vancouver, Canada. So, on the left side here, you've got your list of cameras. This is all broken out and spread out, so instead of camera names, they have the models so that you can demonstrate them. This platform is a tab-based platform, so as you saw, I went from site login to view. Very similar how you would use a web browser, Chrome, something like that. The biggest thing that I want to get across with this platform is the user friendliness of it. Not everybody's gonna use it the same way or would use it the same way, but they all get to the same destination, whether it's pulling footage, looking for events, exporting video. As I mentioned here on the left, everything is expanded out right now. The way we've done it in other city systems is that instead of this being, you know, two different locations, we would have direct center, the golf course, splash pad, areas across the city that you'd be able to look into. I know specifically with Ellsworth, Chief Halfhill has all the ability to pull us in through the city council to be able to view it and manage it, so that if anything happens at any of those areas, he can pull the footage. As we drop down here, we'll break out to different cameras. It's as simple as pulling these in and then streaming them. That is a lovely tree to look at. So each of these is a different camera model. This one happens to be a five megapixel on the left and a six on the right. As you can see, it's outlining individuals as well as vehicles. This camera right here is an analytic camera. The software enables you to be as budget friendly as possible with the system of just capturing surveillance as well as up to appearance search of somebody showed up in an area that they weren't supposed to be and you get an alert for it. Right here, we can see that this is a vehicle, so we can drag over there. This is a person. One thing that you can do is go over here to recorded. And because these are analytic cameras, you can search based on appearance, search, motion, event. Some cameras have the ability to read license plates, so one of the systems we've looked at and are working on is cameras at each of the intersections throughout the city to be able to capture, I don't wanna say tagged license plates, but flagged license plates that pop up on a list. There are integrations to be able to do that, so that if a license plate that pulls up is known to be either stolen, wanted, those can automatically pop in here in a report. The system has that capability. But right now, we can just search on motion and then the screen box, what it's doing is showing the area. If I wanted to select my own area, I could drag it down. So if I didn't want to capture everything inside of that street above and just wanted to capture this area, that's the area I'm looking at. Because this camera is an analytic camera, it gives me the ability to search for a person or a vehicle. And then we go to, just wanting to search for a person. If we look for a certain time, so we're back in 2020. Let's get all the way back to where we are now. And I will just throw a random search in. So you see I clicked here and was able to select the time there. The other option is down here to be able to search using this area and select your time. Minimum record time, we want a person. You can allow what the confidence level is. So if you want it to give the most sure reading, you can crank it all the way up to 100. Or if they might have been further away, you can lower that confidence and possibly bring those in. We'll just do a random search. And so it pulled up one person with 82% confidence. And so from here, you can play that. You can export this event, bookmark this event. So if it was a certain case of looking for a vehicle instead, you just go and select the vehicle and change those, because we've got the tolerance set higher, we've got those areas. And so it quickly allows you to be able to identify an area or some instance where you might know something happened to a vehicle and something was stolen out of it, something was stolen out of a maintenance shop, something of that sort. That is just a brief rundown of the cameras. This does also have an access control. That is the other part of this is that key fobs or credentials is access control. And so being able to tie that into the same system and show that who's coming in and out of buildings, city offices, areas of that sort, who needs to be in there, who doesn't need to be there. The nice thing about that is it's all within the same software. And so I can pull it in and pull it up over here. I don't have my keyboard on me, it's up there on the physical laptop. But you log in here and you can pull a site report for your city hall. So who was going in at that time? Hey, somebody missed, we're missing some paperwork. Oh, okay, so and so went and got it for us. Or the city office, or a city shop, a door is accessed after hours, who accessed it? Okay, there was a call, they need to go in and see that. That's some of the abilities of this system, just broadly, real quick, for everyone who wasn't there. And basically, the system allows for what are you wanting to get out of it? And how can we develop a system that best fits you? Not everybody needs the full spectrum analytics. Where do you just need coverage and where do you need to be able to address instances of crime or unusual activity? So, and this is their manufacturing plant. This is an overlay of the maps, so you can see which cameras are in that area. You can hover and pull a quick snapshot. You can also set up multiple maps within buildings. So that's just a brief rundown. Any questions you guys might have about it?
You might touch on the fact that the camera will memorize a place until some unusual activity happens, you know, that's not normal.
Yep, so the cameras themselves, I showed the analytic cameras. All Vigilon cameras have low-level analytics as far as unusual motion. So if it's looking at a street area, for instance, this camera, say that during nighttime, there shouldn't be anything there. Even on a low-end camera, or the lower-end cameras that Vigilon provides, it'll recognize that somebody shouldn't be there, because it's been there for 30 days, nothing's happened at night. But a vehicle drove through and so it spotted it and marked it as unusual activity. And so that's one of the things that even with the lower-end cameras that it provides, there's still a higher-end camera being able to identify that and cut down your time on having to find something.
What's the storage capacity and the duration of any given timeframe?
How much do you want?
Let's just say a month.
So that's typically what we shoot for. The way that camera systems work is that, say you want to shoot for 30 days, then depending on how many cameras you're running, that will depend on how much storage, depending on how fast they're running. So it's a broad open in question, but we always shoot for 30 to 90 days retention. As well as the systems have the ability to archive. So if you needed to keep, we've had some hospitals that need to keep six months. And so they'll put a network attack, network attached storage device to it and archive overnight that 31st day so that they maintain the storage and can pull it later. The system's customizable to, hey, we only need two weeks, or we need 90 days and need to archive. And that's really through discussions that we have with you of where are your needs, what are your needs for each site, each facility, and what best fits your needs.
On a system like this, are you able to download maybe a clip of a certain timeframe, let's just say a day?
Yes, so exporting a whole day. Part of the reason that they go in and add all of these features of recordings and being able to search is that they want to cut down on how much time you actually need to pull. And so the instances I was pulling up earlier were a couple seconds. And so this is the appearance search, so if you had everything, you could search male, female, color, age, all of those features. We'll go back to the motion here real quick and I'll show you. I love that it defaults to 2020 on there. We always give the Vigilon guys grief on that, because it goes back so far. So, in these instances right here, something happened, you know, maybe something happened overnight. The nice thing is you can do scroll, so I'm scrolling in now to be able to see that, you know, say this was the event. What you can do is you can add an export. You can actually move this over and select your time. And so if that's all you're needing before and after, you can hit okay. And the nice thing about it is it creates a tab up here and then it creates your export. So everything that you were working on before is still there. And you can go in here and export it. It gives you all different options. Because it is a system that's built with the cameras and the software, you have the option to export the player. So you still maintain all of those features. However, we know that sharing files is always difficult. And so you can export it as an AVI, which is, would work in your Windows Media Player. So anybody would be able to pull it up on their computer. The nice thing about the Vigilon system as well is it takes key frame interval pictures. And so if it was needing to be used in a court of law, because those key frame intervals are there, they cannot be touched without known. And so if they are touched, it's very apparent that it was. And so that's what allows it to be held up in a court of law, is those key frame intervals. And so I know it's been used many a times with the footage pulled from the systems. Any other questions?
What do your basic cameras run price-wise?
So in most instances, we would be looking at exterior bullet cameras for you guys, is my assumption. The cameras themselves range about 350 to 450 apiece. Indoor cameras are a little less than that. Any licensing associated with it is a one-time license, so there's no recurring cost. There's no yearly maintenance subscription on top of it. It's one camera, one license, and you have it. There's not gonna be a stop-in date of, well, you didn't re-up your software subscription, so it dies. There is none of that. You guys have free downloads for any new software that's pushed, which they're pushing softwares very regularly right now. And so that would typically be, I would average about 350 to 450 a camera for what you guys would be looking at in most instances that we've looked at for cities. Your analytic cameras are gonna be closer to your $1,000 per camera mark.
So what if we wanted to put in like all of our, all of our entrances coming into town?
So if you...
And maybe shooting three or four different ways?
Are you wanting to capture licenses?
I don't know.
Why is that, what the point was?
I mean, yeah.
I didn't know really that we were possibly looking at parks and stuff, I guess.
Well, I'm just thinking, I think it's beneficial to have them come in and going into town and maybe even some of our other places in town, intersections, main streets, you know. I mean, if, because I know when I sat through there, that time, you know, we were talking about being able to put it at an intersection and look four different ways with one camera.
And so that is really gonna be dependent on the intersection. That's why we do walkthroughs and work with you guys before we even say, hey, this is a dollar amount. Based on a system like that, because it is very situational and specific. You know, some intersections, they have poles that are mounted closer to the city, closer to the street than others. And so the big thing with capturing license plates and who's coming in and out is you want to make sure that you have the correct height, distance from those. So I think going around and looking at those is something that we could then, you know, propose a cost of what that would be. Off the top of my head, I don't feel like it would be justifiable to say, you know, X amount of dollars based on any intersection. I think it'd be better to actually look at it and then develop a plan from there as far as what are your, what are your main intersections and what do you really want to capture?
I think Jake said that, hey, somebody I sat out there, you know, like do putting one on each end of 281 at city limits, and he said a $3,000 camera on each end would be a pretty good camera as far as the license plates and that sort of thing goes, so. But like he said, they can go anywhere from 300 up to 10,000, can't they?
Some 20,000 explosion-proof cameras, but I don't think you guys need those. Maybe at the grain bins.
How are they powered?
So they're power over ethernet, so they're powered by Cat 5 or Cat 6 cable. The way that we've done citywide systems is we've had an exterior rated box mounted on the poles and then they'll communicate via wireless point-to-point radios that we set up. And that's why I emphasize on the city design system of, if it's six intersections as opposed to one, it's a lot different of a system and a lot different dollar amount cost. I know we wanted to bring this in front of you as something to think about and look about, look at, and have us work with you on. Yeah, that's how the power goes short.
Training to roam and like IT support, is that included with it, that's separate?
So we do training part of the installation. Any training, we babysit the system for 90 days. So after install, we have techs check it every day, every morning, make sure all the cameras are up. Any additional remote support that you guys need, you can have that. The nice thing about the system, they also have a nice little help tab that does pull up all the help. We are just right up the road, so if you guys need anything, we're there. We do offer some managed service agreements if you guys wanted to get set up on a, on a constant daily check, but it's not something that we mandate as far as you have to have this to work. We want you to be as independent or dependent on us as you want to be. Some people need a lot more help than others, others just want a reliable system. And once they get rolling on it, they're good to go and we're there to answer any questions that might come up.
What about warranty?
So all servers have five-year warranty with the availability to expand up to two years. And cameras have a three with the ability to expand up to five.
And after that, the first 90 days, Ross, I think Jake said it's like $60 a month if you want us to keep checking it after that. If you guys don't want to check it yourself, we will continue doing that. I think he said it was 60 bucks a month. That's what he told us. But for the first 90 days, they do it up there every day. Doesn't cost, don't cost you nothing. It's part of the package.
Yep, and any service calls within that time don't cost anything either, so.
Any more questions, council?
When this records, say we have it, I mean, it's gonna record onsite here.
Yes, so the way that we set up the systems is physical storage. Cloud storage is a thing that's been sold and sold and sold with the ring cameras, everyone knows. We build systems that have physical storage so that you're not dependent upon networks or anything dropping to where you might lose the footage. So that's something that we work through on as far as, okay, we want to shoot for 30 days of storage. We've got X amount of cameras. We get those set up and we get you guys set up to where you have physical storage and can pull it remotely if need be, so.
Okay, unless there's any more questions, I'd like to thank you gentlemen for coming in here and demonstrating on this. Give us some time to look over all this information and then we'll be in contact. I'll have Jamie contact you and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Of course, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Something you can get your list of references, maybe Jamie?
Yeah, we can get you a list of references, of course.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Did everybody get a flyer that wanted one?
Yeah, I'd love to get one, Jerry.
Thank you. Jamie want one, you want one?
I've got one, I've got one.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the weather that we live for all year.
All right.
See you guys later.
Take care. Okay, we're moving on to department heads. And have you got anything from Jeff to be talked about?
They're going to plan on pouring the concrete pad by the end of the month. Mansell was not available to do it, so they came down yet, was it yesterday they came down to look at everything?
I don't think so, yes.
This is at the truck parky?
Park plant.
Park plant, okay.
From the crew's gonna, what?
Yeah.
Crew's gonna, the...
Their contractor, their concrete contractor will be pouring the pad, yes.
You said you don't want to talk about it?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns to pass on to Jeff? Okay, moving on, street, excuse me, Water Department, Jason.
Well, we've just been changing a couple meter setters here and there, and then most of the time we're just streeting it, so. Everything's kind of going with the flow, literally.
Mayor, have you heard anything from them or they?
Well, they're booking it. They had, they got stuck last week with a COVID, so they couldn't make it at all last week. So, but yeah, I just sat there and they've been doing their thing and I think they got like three or four reels left and that's it, so.
And I think they're working on one or two, I think there's only one full one sitting down there tonight when I came by. They got the other ones on the trucks.
How's that machine we bought for the exercising, the water valves? Have you guys used it at all this year?
Yeah, we have, we've used it. We haven't got on a maintenance schedule yet, but we've been using it every time we need to move one here or there.
Works, works.
Yeah, it works pretty good.
Like you want it or better?
No, it works good.
Good, good.
Yep. Keeps you from getting busy. Yep.
Anybody have any other questions, comments, or concerns under Water Department? Moving on to the Street and Park Department.
As you guys see, we're just picking up chat and then we've been trying to hit the tree limbs and doing what grading we can and alleywork.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions and comments or concerns for Jason under Street and Park Department? Okay, moving on, Police Chief.
I don't have anything.
Okay. I want to thank you for allowing my students to job shadow with the police department this semester. So they've, while they haven't, we haven't had a whole lot of things to do, what they have learned, they've talked about quite a bit, especially when they were placed in the shackles and the handcuffs. So it was quite interesting, so thank you. All right, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Chief Perez? Okay, do we have anything from Chief Sanders? Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns to pass on to Chief Sanders this evening? Okay, City Administrator.
Just want to let you guys know that our newspaper didn't publish our budget summary, so it has been sent to them again. Should be in next week's paper. We'll just have to go over everything. Just having another budget hearing and...
Was this due to the change of ownership or?
He's not sure. He found my email, yeah. He found my email. He said that an ad got placed under the city of Pratt's and he thinks that mine should have been where the ad was and, I mean, he made a comment about them buying out of New Jersey and, or where it, yeah.
All right.
I've been looking at the regulations on how our newspapers choose, like if it's, like I know the county just says, like at the beginning of each year, this is our official newspaper. So I don't know if that's something we need to start doing or if it's actually in the city code somehow. So I did a little bit of research last week, but...
It's pro state statute.
Per, okay. So I'll be looking into that and maybe look at changing it to Stafford, because I only see bad things about St. John News and no one even getting it, so it's hard for me to continue to pay for all these publications when five people are getting the newspaper.
Well, it's just really difficult when the city, when the city newspaper, St. John News, is that in name only.
Yeah.
And I just, well, I'll just leave it at that. Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns are for Jamie under City Administrator. Okay, moving on, City Attorney, John.
I don't have anything to him.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for John? Okay, anybody want to talk about anything under old business? Okay, moving on to new business, skating rink.
I gave you guys a quote to get the lights replaced in the wet center. The total is $2,673.44. And we would like that to be taken out of the 1% sales tax. There's about $7,000 left in the wet center budget for this year. And just to be on the safe side, I mean, we have the cleaning contract being taken out. But that fund is dwindling pretty quickly with the interest rates lately, so.
The thing about, we actually got, the fire department actually got called over there. Ballast burn... there, ballast burn up, but honestly, I mean, we throw the breaker in, it trips the breaker immediately, and even the lights that are working over there, I mean, there's only-
Yeah, it, 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 those are some nice lights.
I think they gave ten dollars apiece off for all of them, so.
I think, is, is that just, is that a whole replacement fixture, is that just a-
Yeah, it's a whole replacement fixture and it kind of looks like it's-
Like these, aren't they?
Yeah, it's exactly like that.
So basically the LED lights?
Yes, yeah, there's, there's-
Last a lot longer?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm all for it because it's dark over there and, I mean, we put a lot of money into it last year, we might as well.
We just get charged tax on that because we generate revenue from there a little bit, is that right?
And it's the electric department, so I will look into that to make sure it's a taxable, but yeah, I mean, the, the facility still generates revenue with the skating rink, so, yeah, I'll have to double check, but that's a very question. I feel like everything else is ta- the only thing that's taxed is electric and water. I will have to look in, at, into that and get back to you.
That power guy, you gonna put those in there?
Yes, that's going to be under the winter list.
I think it'd be a good idea to paint it while the lights are down, just shoot it, paint, like kilts, paint. The building's looking really neat, I think while we're out, they're pig pulling those lights down to spray it real quick, it won't cost that much.
Just kill two birds with one stone.
You're talking about the tiles, suspended ceiling?
Instead of replacing the tiles, just give it a good painting with some kilts, just a gun real quick and it'll look really neat, clean, while they're there doing it, it really don't take that long.
Yeah. Yeah, because I know we, we had priced that one year and I think it was astronomical to put in, I think it was like twelve or fourteen thousand dollars to replace ceiling tiles in there.
On paint, we'd probably be in that probably eleven hundred bucks, give the entire building.
You think you could check into Jamie and make sure, there's a bunch of them, not just broken, I know there's some, there's, you know, some of them sagging too, I notice, I mean-
I mean, replacing it would be a lot to do, like the rails and the tiles.
Yeah, yeah.
Just the tiles are real expensive. I just think we've spent a lot of money, I hadn't been in there, went in there for that fire and for that call and it looks good and that would make a big difference. You just got to keep up after what we have, and I mean, just as well.
I think we need to look into something with, I mean, some of them tiles probably need to be replaced, no doubt, yeah.
Well, they've been there for quite a long time, so yeah.
But I would, uh, make a motion to purchase new lights for the wet center at twenty-six hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-four cents to come out of the one percent sales tax.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Okay, anything else under?
Yes, um, so we are in the slow process of opening up the skating rink for, um, like the season, I guess. I really have stopped allowing people, um, to rent it. It, to me, it's up to them, they want to have a party and they can go have a party with their family. Um, and the after-school program has been going on Tuesdays, so we've continued all of that. Um, Michael Craven and Kristen have talked about, they've expressed interest in running it. Um, one downfall right now is Craven's at the academy, so he doesn't get home till, what, December? So-
But you'd be here on the weekends.
Right. So I need to talk to him and, um, see if, if that's still an option or I can put it out. It's a very hard position to fill because it's really just not that great. I mean, it's every Friday and Saturday, I don't even know what time I do it, and I get-
Seven to nine?
I think it's twenty, it's either twenty-eighty or forty-sixty with the sales.
Twenty-eighty.
Twenty-eighty.
It's twenty-eighty on skating.
And then all concessions.
They get twenty and city gets eighty?
No, I think we get twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they get all concessions because they buy all the concessions.
So Marshall and I were talking a little bit and we thought about maybe being able to pay that person a little bit of a wage to help incentivize.
I mean, we pay the people who run the pool, and you know, I mean, I, we're not doing it for profit, either one of them, it's a service.
Yeah.
But we have had a hard time keeping somebody because they just, you know, it's a lot of time and effort and they don't really make much money, if any, at all. Um, I'm not opposed to paying someone, whether we do a contract for the season or whether we do an hourly wage.
Yeah.
I think it would, and it might make it a little better for them to want to do it, somebody to do it anyway.
Yeah, it's every weekend to the season?
Every Friday and Saturday.
Every Friday, Saturday, for two hours a night, or wherever they sit.
I don't, anyone that, since I've been here, anyone that wants to run it, I let them run with it. If they want to be there for five hours a night, they can be there for five hours.
I know, I know one year they had, before they had like seven to nine was-
Older kids.
Up to a certain age and then at from like nine to eleven was-
She stayed open for older kids.
Anybody in older, you know, adults and high school kids.
Right.
Make the smaller kids go home at nine and then, but I don't remember who it was at that point.
It's been a while.
Yeah, well, I don't think it was one of them.
Was it the Girl Scouts?
Yeah, it was the Girl Scouts.
Because they did it for-
If they read?
No, she passed away, was it Sharon?
Sure, sure.
Because the Girl Scouts, the Girl Scouts really enjoyed doing it and, and in my opinion, it was great because they were learning work ethic and, and working for something, their goal that, I think they were going on a trip, so it really worked out well, but, so maybe just think about that and we can discuss and open the job up for-
Check with Kristen and see what their pulse is and-
Yeah.
If they've expect, expressed interest, we can get together with them and-
Right.
Yeah, I, I want to compensate them, I think it's, it's a great thing.
Still making work of it.
I think, I think like, uh, I think like you said, Ross, um, it's a, it's a service to the community and it's something that it gives the, the younger kids and the teenagers in this community something to do instead of running around, uh, around town and getting into a lot of problems, so, yeah.
Cost of the spin more.
Cost of the spin more, that's right, okay. Right, anything else? Okay, we have a ten-minute executive session to discuss the evaluations. Uh, you want everyone around the table?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, should include everyone here sitting at the table, so entertain a- Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Thank you.
Okay, a motion and a second on the table, we, and all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries, will resume at, uh, seven thirty-eight. I want to bring this up real quick. Called this, uh, meeting back to order.
Mark?
Yes?
Can we talk about this again real quick, just briefly?
Okay.
I mean-
Why don't we do the, the motion first and then talk about that?
I would, uh, I would make a motion to give Eric Crowley a raise from fifteen twenty-five to fifteen fifty-five for his evaluation.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, motion carries.
I'd make a motion to give Jason Wyatt a raise from twenty-seven sixty to twenty-eight forty-three per his evaluation.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, motion carries.
And I'd make a motion to give Pam Watson a raise from twenty-one twenty-one to twenty-one eighty-five per her evaluation.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, motion carries, okay.
No, just, this is something that I personally think we should probably wait on a little bit, I mean, just the amount of money we spent already, I mean, the loader and these water lines, I mean, water tower, the power plant, I mean, if we're looking at three or four cameras per intersection, I mean, we're going to be looking thirty, forty pound, I'm sure, I, I don't know, but I just think we've spent quite a bit. This would probably be a neat deal to look at maybe next year if the, when the truck parking lot's done, put them there too, but just-
Part of it, and I don't know for a fact, um, last meeting when I brought this up, the county is interested in doing this and there might be a chance, chance that the county would help pay for some of the cameras as well.
Yeah, I see that, good deal. I would like the highway ones, entrances of town.
Did you use the ARPA funds?
That, when I was talking to one of the commissioners, that's what he was saying, was they were going to use the ARPA funds, so it may, it may be one of them things that if we're going to do something and they're willing to pitch in, we're going to have to do it when they're willing to do it, so they can pay for it, help pay for it.
Do you know where they stand right now and how, like, quickly they said they would be in that? Not really.
Well, we're still doing well on our budget, I mean, we're not over budget by any means.
No, just, we've done a lot of good and stuff, but just, I don't see a necessity in it to spend it right now, but-
I just think-
It'd be good to have a truck parking lot, I think, for sure.
Thirty to forty thousand dollars is a lot cheaper than, and, and you know what's happening in your town or leaving your town or coming into your town.
Yeah.
There's been numerous things stolen this year from St. John, leaving town.
Right, yeah.
And it's only, it's only going to get worse before it gets better, I'm pretty sure.
You're right.
Just, I'm not opposed to it.
It's a, it's a valid concern, that's all it is, so yeah.
Would we have manage it? Yes. All right, just checking.
Okay, unless there's any more discussion on that subject, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Sorry. I have a motion, a second and a third on the table, all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries, meeting adjourned.